All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, February 21st, 2022 meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is currently 7:01 PM. And just so everyone knows, we do have a public hearing coming up here just a little bit, but we are going to start off just normally as we would with our meeting. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance by Ty Camp.
Thank you. Everyone, join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this time just to meet here tonight to discuss city matters. Thank you for our staff and our city council and Mayor's fathers. They work so hard to make these decisions for us. We pray that you would grant us wisdom as we consider things tonight and just give us clarity of thought and so we can make the right decisions. Jesus, let me pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Ty. We do not have any presentations on the agenda, so that brings us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. And just so you all know, out of the comment cards that we have here, please let me know if your intention was instead to speak in the public hearing with our Planning and Zoning Commission. Otherwise, I'm going to assume that these are all for the regular session. The first comment card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name is Mark Malloy. I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member for the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the '02, '21, '22 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am here tonight to talk about many JV government issues. The first issue is about government transparency. I have noticed recently that most of the government's decisions are being decided in the consent agenda section of the meeting. This is not government transparency because there is no discussion by the government officials on an issue to allow the citizens to hear information about what will be voted on. All of the consent agenda items will be voted on to be approved with one single block vote of the council members. There will be, there will most likely be some consent agenda items moved to the regular agenda tonight to substantiate that I am incorrect in what I'm saying. Jim Fields, a citizen, has requested that Councilman James Singleton move two consent agenda items to the regular agenda. I am asking the JV council and mayor about the waste of at least $189,000 of the JV taxpayers' money on the golf course clubhouse and convention center building design that is now not going to be built, which is government waste, which means you are reckless, frivolous with the taxpayers' money. You, as a government body, have recently tried to consider asking the JV taxpayers to take on $20 million in debt to fund your desired projects, but then decided to reduce the amount to $10 million, and three council members out of five were going to vote to approve putting the $10 million bond referendum on the May 7th, 2022 JV election ballot. A previous term-limited council member spoke at the recent council, a recent council meeting to say to you that they did not believe that the $10 million bond referendum specifically called for to build a new $7.5 million golf course clubhouse and convention center, which would include other projects that would total $10.25 million and would very likely require a property tax rate increase to the citizens of Jersey Village be approved. So he's saying that he did not believe that it would be approved. After that recommendation by the previous council member, you, the JV council, city council, decided to not call for a bond referendum. There was concern by you, the current JV council, that if the $10 million bond was voted down, that it would make it harder for you to go forward with spending stockpiled, non-taxpayer-approved, accumulated city revenue in the amount of $7.5 million to go forward and build what you, the JV council and mayor desires. Now, tonight, you're going to consider hiring another consultant architectural firm for an unknown amount of city revenue to create another clubhouse convention center and gut the existing clubhouse to the structural steel frame and build that into an event center. How much is all of that going to cost the JV taxpayers? And is it going to end up going to, going over the original $2.4 million estimated cost to build the original facility? I am also asking about the actual factual qualifications and actual past completed projects that have been done by the new development group that the JV government is going to go into executive session to deliberate and maybe decide to hire during this council meeting. We have now, in the recent past, had recent councils choose a developer that did not apparently have the necessary experience to accomplish the JV government's terse, too, village center-desired dream vision. Because of this, JV government failure to, the JV citizens, taxpayers, they are screwed out of many more thousands of dollars. One example is the $450,000 or more taxpayer dollars that were paid to the original developer to create architectural drawings of a new city hall facility that may not be used. The Jersey Village City Charter needs to be changed to not allow the JV government to be able to ineptly waste hundreds of thousands and possibly millions of dollars of JV taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. The next comment card I have is from Jeff Kopecky.
Jeff Kopecky, I live at 16125 Delozer. I don't know if I'm correct, but I'm thinking that this Old Hempstead Highway over here is in Jersey Village city limits because it runs parallel with the feeder, and I know when you cross Belt 8, it says entering the city of Jersey Village. And I know in the old days that Jersey Village patrolled that, set up radar on that road, and what I'm asking, if it is not in the city, okay, that's fine too, but it needs to be cleaned up. And somebody needs to get a hold of whoever the officials are, commissioner, state, whatever, to get it cleaned up because it's a major eyesore if you're coming down Old Hempstead Highway to Britmore. From Britmore all the way back to the Beltway, that's all nothing but a dumping ground. And I mean, there's trash, there's everything you can possibly think of that's being dumped over there. Now, at that one time, you had a Taco Bell and a McDonald's that backed up. I know that was in Jersey Village, and that's some of the areas that's getting dumped on right now. So something needs to be done over there. I mean, we keep preaching about we need to get cleaned up around here. Well, we definitely need to clean that area up over there because, I mean, it is pitiful. I didn't get time to take pictures of it today, but it is a bad situation. Somebody needs to get a hold of some state or county or somebody to get that cleaned up if it's not our responsibility. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, and I did check the, I think the only part that even comes close to fronting the Hempstead Highway that's in Jersey Village would be the portion that I think is Texas Department of Transportation, the detention area that's right there at the corner of 290 and the Beltway. So we could reach out to, if that's the part you're talking about, is the, that, that sort of corner right there.
It starts, they start dumping on the Beltway, and they go all the way, almost to Britmore dumping trash. It looks like dump trucks are actually dumping. I mean, that's how much stuff is over there.
Well, we'll look into it and see who we need to reach out to. Thank you. The next comment card I have is from Joe Hewitt.
Good evening. My name, my name is Joe Hewitt. I reside at 15917 Lakeview Drive, and I am president of Jersey Village Senior Outreach, JVSO, which is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization with 186 members who are 55 years or older, living within the city of Jersey Village. It is with great pleasure that I inform you that the U.S. House of Representatives proclaimed February 15th, 2022, as National Village Day. JVSO is part of this movement, which has, which began 20 years ago with the launch of the first village in Boston, Massachusetts. This village model serves as a cost-effective, sustainable solution for healthy, vibrant aging. As I stated in past city council meetings, senior villages are quite prolific on the East Coast and the West Coast, with over 300 villages nationally, but there are only four in Texas, and JVSO is one of them. Today, I would like to update you on how we're doing. We are now in our fifth year. Our membership continues to increase with our member retention rate of over 90%. I believe this is due to our robust, diverse calendar of activities and events, as well as our direct support services. These two components are the foundation of our organization in keeping older adults active and connected, which promotes independence to remain within our homes as long as safely possible. I would like to share with you some of JVSO's statistics. Now, please remember, these were accomplished during the pandemic. Last year, we offered 262 individual activities and events that were held both virtually and in-person, if possible. There were 3,241 members in attendance at these activities and events, which translates into 5,140 attendance hours in all. With regards to our volunteer hours, the backbone of our existence, between the direct and indirect support, we had a total of 2,467 volunteer hours. Now, I know statistics provide a lot of information, but personal anecdotes tell the real story. So allow me to share just a few with you. We recently had a new member join our walking group in mid-December after her husband passed from cancer right before Thanksgiving. Her grief was palpable, for the loss was recent, but she continued to come, not only to walking group, but she also joined yoga, book club, TED Talk Thursdays, film club, craft making. It was wonderful to see her connecting and enjoying her time with others as she navigates this new life without her partner. When she tells her friends who do not live in JV about JVSO, many say they wish they had something like that in their own neighborhood. And one other story that tugs at my heart was one from one of our older gentlemen who lives by himself. He called our volunteer helpline, asking if anyone who could come over and visit, for he was lonely. We coordinated with one of our volunteers, who also happens to be a member. She now visits him on a regular basis, and not only brings him cookies, but a newfound friendship. So as I close, please know that JVSO is very appreciative of the city's support, and we look forward to continuing to grow and build a vibrant, inclusive, age-friendly community that encourages everyone to thrive and live meaningful, purposeful lives as we age. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The next comment card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and city council, thank you very much for allowing me to participate in tonight's meeting. My name is Jim Fields. I live at 16413 St. Hillier. I want to first thank Lori Cootie, who I bugged on a Friday afternoon. I don't think I'll do that again. And thank you again for all your help on getting my application in for candidacy. Thank you so much. Second thing I want to do is I want to thank the police. I don't know if anybody else was aware, over on, in front of Whataburger, was a really bad apple, and I was just amazed on how quickly they took care of the situation, extremely professional, no yelling, had complete control of it, and was just absolutely amazing. I thought it was a movie. It was done so well. Thank you again for keeping our city safe. And I want to go on to thank you. Mayor, it's always thank, I always thank you for the town hall meetings, to stand there like a big bullseye and take all our arrows at you. That takes a lot of courage, and I appreciate that. That means you're trying to get information from the citizens, and I do really appreciate that. And at that last town hall meeting, we were able to get a wealth of information, which more people attend because it's, I think it's excellent. Again, I thank you. We had the good news is, and I think this is great, that the golf course is making more monies, which looks like it's covering the operations, but it's still operating red if you're including the debt service, but the debt service is going to be going away soon. So that's looking brighter and brighter. Thank you. City Hall, the one thing, when we had that meeting on Thursday, the developer was there. I had no idea. The guy has developed up and down 290, incredible. He's the one that the Subaru dealership, the Lillian BBQ, and the Papasitos, I think he had the outlet, incredible. And he was stating that that property over there that we're trying to develop is not the best idea. He said he even looked into it, and with some of his developer friends, and they said, no, go because it's too close to railroad tracks, which is what had been mentioned before. He also mentioned was a good idea, I'd like to share with everybody, was two acres is all we need to build city hall. So he said to build it off of Diller Street. I know the property might be expensive, but in all, it may be a great idea, just throwing that out there. And one last thing, and this was just a paper straw vote there. No citizens were in favor of moving the city hall across 290, but I want to make sure it wasn't hundreds. We only had about 10 people there, so I want to make sure that's clear. All right, the village center, close to 900 people voted against moving the city hall across 290. And I did speak, Mayor, and you asked me if I spoke with anybody, and I did. I went and spoke with 10 people, and they don't want to melt. And the sports stadium is just complete, I was surprised to see we're even talking about that. I don't know why we need it. I wish we'd have more discussion in city hall, you know, in the city hall meetings so we can get up to speed to make sure we approve of it, because it's our money. We're the ones that'll be paying for it. Another thing that's concerning on the village center is that we don't have, to my, if I'm going by the town hall meeting, was no one on city council and city has any real experience in real estate development. I know you can say, well, we can go ahead and get somebody to develop for us, but if you don't have the experience, I'm concerned. And one question I was, was in my head was, who and how are developers selected? Do we have a checklist? Is that checklist, is that out there so we all can see? Because it's got, the KHJR Real Estate Advisory Service are located in California. I'm surprised we have to go all the way out to California to find out somebody to develop a property here in Texas. Another thing that was really odd about that was that I went to the website, and they had one project I worked on, it was Henderson Hospital, but after that, everything else was just things they were planning to do, and that was kind of concerning to me. And why don't we, if it's possible, and hopefully this gentleman will come back, it's too bad we couldn't seek out the developer from the town hall meeting. I think he'd give everybody a lot of insight. And last thing is clubhouse. The architects, how are they selected? Do we, again, is that a checklist that we all go, go through? If so, can we publish this? Thank you again very much for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
I can, if I may, since it's on the agenda, at least the consent. The architect was selected through RFQ, and the criteria and the award, the points associated with that criteria are listed in the agenda item.
Yeah, it's all public notice. The next card, or the last comment card I have is Kimberly
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my sixth installment on Jersey Village, I've continued reading the publicly available city council minutes on the city's website, jerseyvillagetx.com, to learn more of how our village kept shaping into a city within the state of Texas and Harris County guidelines, and borrowing ideas from other small incorporated towns. Jersey Village is on the site of the former F&amp;M Dairy Ranch that Clark Wilcox Henry ran from 1938 to 1948. In the early 1950s, Clark Henry initiated the transition into a housing community with Leroy Kennedy. Resident and attorney Leonard Lee found out that the city of Houston had plans to annex Jersey Village, so Lee gathered all residents' signatures on a petition that night and blocked the annexation to then incorporate on April 16th, 1956. Over the decade of the 1960s, it proved to be a learning experience that set for the growth of our village. For the police department, there were six volunteer police officers, and much to organize who and how patrol would take place, including driving through another community for a price per house to cover the expenses, as well as volunteers not living in the village to patrol. The police chief would see about having the name of Jersey Village painted on the side of the police car for up to $35, and if decals could be used, which would run $25. In 1964, the cost of buying hats for officers would be $30, and badges $21. Turns out, speeding was a frequent complaint by and of residents, so notifications of tickets to be issued and use of a radar on weekends was advised in a letter by Mayor Ellis. There were also reports of hot rodding. At the dead end of Lakeview at Philippine, so HLP would install streetlights to deter such activity. After Harris County expanded Senate Avenue northward, Mayor Dixon recommended stop signs be placed at the intersection of Jersey as well as Acapulco, since many children played in this area. Though, in 1969, the amount of southbound drivers failing to come to a complete stop at this sign prompted ways for monitoring, issuing tickets, and moving the 30 mile an hour sign closer to Acapulco. For the fire department, on November 24th, 1964, there was a proposal for an election so citizens could vote on a tax increase to authorize bonds to pay for a fire truck, which passed by the four councilmen. The election was held on December 10th, 1964, with 42 votes for and 68 against buying a fire truck for $23,000. The city council would then have to check how other small cities, such as Bel Air, handled their fire stations. Much of the March 1965 meeting discussed ideas and options for a fire truck and equipment in the $19,000 range, including used trucks and a homemade truck. Much of the streets had not been poured yet, for the expectation that home builders would take care of this, so getting around the village would be more difficult. In 1967, one builder wanted the city to pay for a street section at the corner of Lakeview and Ashburton so they could have access to the homes they were building. But the subdivision ordinance would have to be amended. The streets that had been poured around 10 years prior were already in bad condition, with ideas needed on how to improve them in a cost-effective manner, such as asphalt topping in lieu of more concrete. The decade came to a close with discussions on implementing a city sales tax, personal use of fireworks, no parking signs, and ordinance against firearm usage, trash pickup services, and the city contributing $15 to the winner of the Christmas decorating contest. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. It's amazing how, you know, as much as things change, things still say the same, don't they? Thank you so much. That's very interesting. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Police.
Mayor and councilors, the report's in front of you. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any questions for the city manager?
I have a comment on the, where did I find it? Parks and Recreation Department report? Is Robert here? Yeah, is that where your greens photos are? Yeah. I mean, I was original requister of this reporting on the condition of the greens, but these photos, I guess they're taken with a drone. They're just, they're not clear enough so we can see. I mean, I play out there, and there's a lot of things I know are on those greens that I can't see from those photos. And I'm just wondering if maybe we ought to change our course of action here. Maybe we should take photos of the problem areas that are out on the greens, and then retake those photos three months down the line and see if any improvement has been done. Because the problems I'm seeing, they're staying there, month after month after month, and I don't know what the solution is at this point, but the problems aren't getting fixed.
Any other questions related to the city manager's report?
Speaking of the golf course, I noticed that the January revenue was by and far, it was, I believe it was the second largest for January in history, and only to be exceeded by last year. And so we're under construction this year, so that makes sense. But otherwise, it seems like they're doing a robust job, as Mr. Fields had pointed out.
Yeah, for this fiscal year, golf course is showing profitability. It's not quite covering depreciation, which will be calculated at the end of the year, but we're talking about the winter months, our lowest revenue months. So I'm looking for big things in the summer, and that's why we need those greens in good shape.
Any other questions related to the city manager's report? All right. That does bring us to item F, Joint Public Hearing with the Planning So the item says, "Conduct a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission for the purpose of receiving oral comments from any interested persons concerning the proposal to amend the city's zoning ordinance to grant a specific use permit to allow the operation of an assisted living and memory care center on the tract of land located at Lot 2, Block 5 of the Northwest Station, Section 2, with a street address of 9300 Seville Lane, within the city of Jersey Village in zoning District G." So we'll now hear from our Planning and Zoning Chairman, Rick Faircloth.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. P&amp;Z met on this issue at our previous meeting. We had, we've had two meetings, one with the developer and the landowner who presented that to the P&amp;Z, and then we had an additional meeting about a week ago, and to do some minor modifications, to put a few restrictions on this special use permit. And we'll, based on the, any comments we get, then we'll reconvene and have the information back for the council meeting.
Great. Chairman Faircloth, do we have a quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
We do have, we do have a quorum here.
Great, thank you. I now call to order this joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:29 PM. Everyone desiring to speak should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will be given five minutes to present information concerning the proposal to amend the city's zoning ordinance, to grant a specific use permit, to allow the operation of an assisted living and memory care center on the tract of land located at Lot 2, Block 5 of the Northwest Station, Section 2, with a street address of 9300 Seville Lane, within the city of Jersey Village in zoning District G. I, at this time, do not have any cards from anyone desiring to speak at this public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Jim Fields.
Just a quick question. What impact will it have on our excellent medical services we get from our fire department? You know, because they're older, they're going to be...
We are going to discuss that briefly. This is our time to hear from you.
Okay, that's my only impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? There being no one else desiring to speak, I now close this joint public hearing on the proposal to amend the city's zoning ordinance to grant a the proposal to amend the city's zoning ordinance to grant a specific use permit to allow the operation of an assisted living and memory care center on the tract of land located at Lot 2, Block 5 of the Northwest Station, Section 2, with a street address of 9300 Seville Lane within the city of Jersey Village in Zoning District G. And we're concluding that meeting, or that public hearing at 7:31 PM. Okay. That now brings us to the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine in nature by the city council and will be enacted with one motion and vote. There will not be separate discussion on these items unless requested by a council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered by separate action. Is there any member of council who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered in the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like item six and eight.
Item six and eight will be considered at the top of the regular agenda. Does any other council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration in the regular agenda? If there are no other adjustments to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six and eight.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda as modified passes. So at the top of the regular agenda, Section 8 of the agenda, we will first consider item six that was pulled from the consent agenda. Consider ordinance number 2022-04, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022, in the amount not to exceed $75,000 by decreasing line item 01125023, grants and incentives, by $75,000, and increasing line item 01125515, consultant services, by $75,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents required to do an economic feasibility study for a multipurpose stadium to be located in Ters Number 2. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, as was just mentioned, this amendment would be necessary to hire a consultant to do an economic feasibility study for a potential multipurpose stadium to be located in Ters 2. The developer is proposing this type of a multipurpose stadium, and we want to make sure that it be an economically feasible thing for us to do. We're looking at two separate companies, both of which have high qualities, high qualifications. The $75,000 would be the top end of the price point. It's likely that the final price point would come in lower than that.
Okay. Any discussion on this agenda item?
Yeah, I wanted to pull this out. I think it's been pointed out, you know, about Village Center, and we had, you know, COVID and other situations with developers. And I think the wise thing to do is before we spend a lot of money, and $75,000 or less is a lot of money, but before we spend more than that, I want to make sure, I think it's wise to say what the impact would be on specific parts of that. I think this is a wise use of funds. Yeah, if it turns out the study says, "Don't do it," well then, saves us from a lot of mistakes. And if it says, "Do it," there's an ROI akin to other studies we've done in the city, such as the Birm Wall Street study that we've used to raise a bunch of funds. I'm not saying we'd get grants for this, but I think we'd be able to pull in other developers and, you know, it's reassurance to ourselves and others in the city that we'd be pursuing the right path.
Since it was pulled, I'll make one comment, that a feasibility study was done with Village Center, and one of the problems was it was done by a private company and that information was not available to council. However, because we were doing this feasibility study, we get the good, the bad, the in, the ugly, and we will be in a much better position to make better decisions in the future. The today, should we move forward with any letter of intent, is merely a letter of intent. It's merely just to say, "Yeah, we're interested in this, and this feasibility study will give us more information to decide if it's the right move or not."
I don't see how we can go forward with this project without having a feasibility study to start with. It'd be totally irresponsible of us not to do it.
Well, to Mr. Fields' point, we don't have experience, deep experience in real estate development, and these folks do. So I think that's really what we're going after, is to get that, those assurances and that information that we need to make an intelligent decision.
I will say this, if you're wondering whether the next Astrodome is coming to Jersey Village, no. That's, we're not even close to that scale. What we're potentially looking at is a smaller facility that would be a multi-use facility. I mean, we're talking about, I mean, it could be not just sporting events like, you know, youth sports or adult recreational sports, potentially smaller scale, minor league baseball, just kind of examples of what it could be. But it also could be things like band competitions or, you know, high school sports, like the postseason events that are sometimes had. It could be baseball, football, soccer, rugby, lacrosse, you name it. Anything that's played on turf could potentially be a possible event for this stadium. And this was something that was proposed as a possible way to increase interest in the area, to generate foot traffic that could help to ensure that any retail and other development in the area would flourish. We've seen other cities who have done something very similarly, done it very successfully. Sugar Land certainly an example. Again, not talking about at that scale, but something more appropriate for the area. But of course, the first question we have to ask is, what are the chances of something like this working? And that's what we're looking at today, is having somebody who is an expert at this sort of question, look at the market, look at the demand, look at what sort of events would potentially be hosted in a facility of the sort, to ensure that we're making a wise decision if we go forward with this. So this is a very, very early step, and I think a wise investment to ensure that we do make a decision with as much information as we can have available before committing further to it. So it's going to be a very long process. This is just, like I said, very, very early steps, and we're going to continue to have other steps taken along the way as long as that path makes sense for the city.
Let me provide an example of what we're talking about. It was brought up earlier in a comment about a developer saying that the development of that land would be difficult because of the railroad track. In our opinion, in our discussions, we were thinking that this venue, type of venue, wouldn't be impacted by the railroad track at all. But that's just our opinion, and we won't really know unless we get an expert opinion on that. And that's the reason for this feasibility study.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll motion to approve ordinance 2022-04. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes. Just to ensure, James, was that a yea?
Yes.
Okay, just, yeah, unanimous. Sorry, I should have looked in your direction as we were going. So that is a unanimous approval of the ordinance. Which brings us to the second item that was pulled from the consent agenda that was previously, item eight on the consent agenda. Consider ordinance number 2022-05, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021 and ending September 30th, 2022, in the amount not to exceed $58,430 by increasing line item 01134504, software maintenance, by $15,540, and line item 01136573, computer equipment, by $42,890 from the general fund restricted balance 0102226, restricted 1% cable franchise fee, in order to set up three cameras for the broadcasting of up to 15 council meetings a year, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and agreements with Swaget Productions LLC, a sole source vendor, for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of broadcasting and video streaming equipment. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, this would upgrade our video broadcasting experience here. It would put in three new cameras. It would be a brand new switch that could be controlled remotely by the company, and it would have, bring a little bit more of a professional style look and feel to our broadcast at the city council meetings. We could certainly broadcast these on our own if we didn't want to pay the annual fee to the company, but we thought it would be a good idea to at least try them out and see how that worked. The restricted 1% cable franchise fee, these are fees that we have to use for things such as this type of product, because it goes to the local access peg channel, so we can't use this money for anything else except for things such as this. I'm happy to answer any other questions the council might have.
Any questions for the city manager or discussion on this item?
Yeah, I guess I should ask it, since I'm the one who brought it up. You answered my question about the 1% franchise fee, and you kind of preempted some other talk about the line item. My question wasn't so much about the installation fees or even the equipment. Those are probably in line with the other. What I saw was the breakdown of the 15K annually, and I tacitly have a problem spending that much on a monthly, you know, $1,200, $1,300 on a monthly basis for a single use. I think people watching this at home are, could be inclined to have a better experience, and I saw some of the pamphlets like that, but it was just my opinion that that's a lot for one broadcast a month. And countered by, what else would we spend that money on? I don't know, but it's just one of those things. So leave it to others to help decide that, too.
Any other discussion on this?
This system would be able to move with us if City Hall was to move, so this would be a long-term good investment.
Absolutely, if we can move this anywhere we wanted to.
So Austin, we own, we'll own the equipment?
Yes, sir.
And even if we don't use their activity?
Correct. We'll still own the equipment. We can still broadcast out to the YouTube channel. The service fees would just be for them to control the meeting broadcast and stuff, which we could do in-house.
I will say, we've had some challenges in the, I guess now it's been four years, almost five years since we started broadcasting our city council meetings, and we did it on a comparative shoestring budget. And if you've ever watched the meetings online, it can be a challenge at times. You know, of course, the camera's way up there. I look about, you know, all of us, each of us look about this small on the camera. I've had citizens say it's sometimes a little hard to, unless you know the person's voice, it can sometimes be a little difficult to know who's talking. And, you know, I mentioned this to Austin, he looked at some solutions and found this one. This is one used by many cities throughout the country. Some of the local examples include the city of Cleburne and the city of Bel Air. And particularly the Bel Air setup, I've looked at before, and it's a vastly improved experience. It is multi-camera, they will pan the cameras to the person who's actually speaking, they will actually put on the screen what item is being discussed at that given time, and there's also a platform where you can click on, the agenda's there, you can click on any point of the agenda and it will move the, you know, for the archive video, it will move the video to that point. So instead of having to slide back and forth through, you know, a YouTube video, you can just go right to the point in the video where that item is being discussed. So I think now that we have more people that rely upon our online broadcasts to be able to keep tabs on city council, I think it's an investment worthwhile, particularly considering the fact that this is a fund that can only be used for public access. So we're using it precisely for the purpose that it's intended and restricted to. Any other discuss, and also to hopefully be more reliable. We've occasionally had situations where we just, the broadcast didn't work, so. Any other discussion on this item?
When would it, when would we suspect that if we say yes, that it could get started?
They said it'd be about 60 days. I'm hopeful in time for the April council meeting.
It's faster than I thought. That's not bad. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll motion to approve ordinance 2022-05. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion?
Before we go on, I would say I like the equipment, and I'd hope city manager and staff from April until the next April would find a way to incorporate other means perhaps to save that 15K on an annual basis if we can find similar value elsewhere.
Actually, I do have one more question, because he raises a good point. So there, obviously the 15 council meetings, that's part of the fee that we are paying for them to actively operate the system so that we don't have to mess with it during those meetings. Are we allowed to operate it ourselves if we go in excess of that?
Yeah, we could operate it on our own.
So if we had additional meetings we want to broadcast, we can do that on our own? Okay. Great.
Is the mayor suggesting we have more meetings?
If things go well, we will. With Village Center particularly. But, you know, we want to give people as much access as possible to as many meetings as possible, so. Unless there's any further discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. All right, now that brings us to our regularly scheduled regular agenda. Item H1, consider resolution number 2022-10, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report concerning the proposal to amend the city's zoning ordinance to grant a specific use permit to allow the operation of an assisted living and memory care center on the tract of land located at Lot 2, Block 5 of the Northwest Station, Section 2, with a street address of 9300 Seville Lane within the city of Jersey Village in Zoning District G. Rick Faircloth, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe they are still, probably should have looked for them before I called that item. Y'all put a pin in that for a moment. We are going to move over, well, I guess...
This is just to receive it, though, right? It doesn't have any impact.
That's true. We could, I assume we can go ahead and just receive it, but it's the second...
They haven't finished the report yet.
Okay. So, well, yeah, that's a good point. We can't not receive a report we don't have in hand, so. And also, item two concerns the, concerns the action on that, doesn't it? All right, so...
Just a recess? I don't think we've ever done that.
Mayor, if you wanted to skip to the item I, just do...
Yeah, just, well, in case we don't, hopefully we don't need an executive session, because otherwise it's, the normal room, we have that in, is preoccupied. Well, let's just quickly, so just so that council kind of understands where we are, I did ask there to be an executive session placed upon the agenda in case anyone had questions that they needed to ask to the city attorney that required confidentiality so that they could receive the fullest advice possible regarding the, regarding item M1, which is the letter of intent between the city and KHJR for Village Center. Is there any council member who is going to require that executive session to receive legal advice? Well, then, I would suggest we skip the executive session. If you decide during the discussion on the item that we do need to go to executive session, we can do so, but if that's the case, then I would recommend that we move to item M1. Seeing no objection. Item M1, consider resolution 2022-11, authorizing the city manager to sign the letter of intent between the city of Jersey Village and KHJR Real Estate Advisory Services LLC relating to the development of Jersey Village Ters Number 2. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, tonight we have this letter of intent with KHJR Real Estate Advisory Services to develop the area in the Jersey Village Ters Number 2. KHJR has as part of their work portfolio developed, owned, and operated several mixed-use developments. They're proposing to develop the land in Ters 2, generally under the vision that is set forth in our current zoning ordinances. set forth in our current zoning ordinances. This letter of intent is non-binding, but it's the general framework for the rest of the documents that would be a part of the development agreements, such as a master development agreement and any Chapter 380 incentive agreements for the project. Those documents would be negotiated at a later date in time. And those two would be approved by the council in a, in a public session. Happy to answer any questions council might have with the letter of intent is in the packet as well.
Any questions or discussion on this item?
I just want to be crystal clear. By approving this and you signing this or authorizing you to sign this, we're not obligated to any financial, any, any ground, any transactions. It's just, we like, we're just certify, certifying is probably the wrong word. So we're, we're just saying, we like your idea, the frameworks, we will take the next step.
Yeah. So I mean, if, if it's approved and it's signed, then all this, it's a non-binding agreement. It just sets the framework for the negotiations that are to come.
Yeah. I will say that we, we, we use letter of intents all the time in, in my line of business. You know, documents like these don't, it's not always about what you can enforce in court. There's also a kind of a, a clarity between parties, a clear understanding. And what, what this is designed to do is to kind of get everyone on the same page regarding what it is we expect from each other, what steps we're going to take going forward, and, and where all of this is going. And so really this is kind of us kind of going back to where we were when we originally looked at developing Village Center, which is we're, we're going back to looking at some of the ideas and concepts of what we would like to see the property become and working with the developer to find a way forward to make this happen. So this is kind of a first step over what is going to take a long time. We're probably, I would say, kind of the timeline we're looking at, we're really looking at next year probably before we're really going to be in a position to take more binding steps, more than likely. So the good thing is it does provide us an opportunity to give the public a sense of what we've been discussing with the developer recently, so that we can start to answer your questions and, and get more feedback from the public. And, you know, it's going to be part of a conversation we're going to have for a while. And I'm looking forward to hearing from everyone about their ideas and aspirations and hopes for this project. Any further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move we approve resolution number 2022-11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All of those against? Any abstentions? It passes unanimously. So now we're going to back up to regular agenda, item one. I'm not going to read it again because I already read it. This is receiving the report from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chairman Faircloth, do you have a, a report for us? Sorry, I read the whole thing and then I realized, I'm like, we don't have a Planning and Zoning Commission out here.
That's right. Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission had met based off comments mostly we had of ourself what, on it. We did not have a unanimous decision. We had four in favor and two against proceeding with the special use. There was a lot of discussion about, could we put some additional provisions? They're just really concerned with some of the questions that the fire chief had mentioned at our last meeting about the number of calls and really putting an additional burden on the fire service. But again, it's a different type of operation. They're supposed to have a certain level of skilled nursing and we just hope that that won't happen. They still have to be permitted by the state and be reviewed for the adequacy of their permit. So hopefully you folks will have some discussion on your own, but it was, it was, it was a close vote. And that's, and you got the, got the report.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. So we have before us the resolution receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission report. Any discussion amongst council regarding the report? Keeping in mind, we have a, an item after this to actually consider and pass the resolution.
This is just to receive the report?
Correct. If there's no discussion, then I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
Move to approve resolution number 2022-10, receiving the Planning and Zoning Commission's final report.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Which brings us to item H2, consider ordinance number 2022-07, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city by granting Jersey Village Lifestyle Limited a specific use permit, also known as the specific use permit, to allow the operation of an assisted living and memory care center on a tract of land located within the city limits at 9300 Seville Lane, Jersey Village, Texas 77040, and in zoning District G, providing requirements and conditions for the specific use permit, containing findings and other provisions relating to this ordinance, providing a penalty in an amount not to exceed $2,000 for violations thereof, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Harry Ward, Director of Public Works.
So I'll go ahead and make the presentation. The Planning and Zoning Commission has submitted their preliminary report. They gave that to city council back on January 17. The council called for a public hearing, which was set for today. That public hearing joint with count, with the P&amp;Z was conducted. And all of the procedural requirements that are required by our code have been met at this time. So this item is for the council to consider the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a proposed report in the, in the packet and there were no changes made to that report by the P&amp;Z.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Lori. Any discussion on this item?
I was going to ask, ask the chief if he had, just to kind of repeat some of the things that he had mentioned in the last P&amp;Z meeting about if, what concerns you might have about the usage or over-usage of emergency services towards a assisted living and memory care facility?
Yeah. So, you know, just to start off, I'm not against the facility. I told them that in there. My concern was that the facility being a memory care and assisted living had the, the proper skill level of staff to handle what they're bringing in. Specifically, speaking of the apartment complex that's going to be right next to it, 200-bed apartments, majority of the people in there you would consider are very close to assisted living. And we go up there about 13 times on average per month. Now, they didn't think that that was a very big number, but our apartment complex, our averages on all the other apartments are two times a month. So to me, it's a bigger number. So my comments to them was I wanted to make sure that the facility was a type B facility licensed through the Department of State Health Services. That brings in the proper nursing staff and skilled staff necessary to handle this facility and to make sure that they maintain that. That was my concern. I didn't want a facility to come in with a less level of care and then that puts burden on our already limited staff. That was my comments.
What type of license does the one where you make 13 calls to have?
It's a 55 and older senior living apartment complex, independent living.
So that's also a type B?
It's not. It's not any type. It's not licensed. It's an apartment complex. But a majority of the people that live in there have care that comes in three times a week to help them. And we're getting close to seeing a lot of those people really needing to be out of there and into an assisted living center. Sometimes we'll go to an apartment two or three times in one day, the same apartment. So again, I'm not against this facility. What I am, is, what I'm for is that they maintain a level of skill that will take care of the issues that we see that are unnecessarily, unnecessary for us to go to, right? That's what we do over at the apartment complexes. No matter what apartment complex it is or a home, you call 911, we're coming. That doesn't matter to us. We're going to come if you call 911. But if you have nurses and skilled of the RN and LVN level who are, know their job, you know, they're licensed and they're regulated, then we're going to see less burden on our already limited staff.
The requirements by the State Department just deal with nurses and not with ambulance service.
No, it doesn't deal with ambulance service, just nursing skill level.
Yeah. See, I mean, they got a nurse on staff, but who takes them to the hospital if the nurse determines that they need to go to the hospital?
Well, sure. It's just like, it's just like, you know, Village ER up front or, you know, Concentra, urgent care clinic, St. Elizabeth or, you know, they have doctors and nurses in there, but at some point, somebody does need to go to the hospital. And that's what we're there for, for emergency care. But for the...
Emergency care. I mean, that's the term we're talking about.
Right.
A lot of this is just needing a transport to the hospital. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's an emergency.
And, and again, we're not a transport service.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
They're going to turn us into a transport service.
We are licensed through the Department of State Health Services as an emergency transport service. So if we, if, if they have a patient who needs to go see their doctor at a specific hospital, then they do need to have that established to have a transport service come and take them, right? Because they want to go to a specific hospital to see a specific doctor. We don't do that. We go on an emergency situation, stroke, cardiac arrest, you know, somebody who has got a major headache with high blood pressure, stroke levels, that's emergency care, right? To go and get my, to a hospital for a specific reason and maybe go get, to my doctor to get a different medicine, well, that's a transport service. We won't do that. We can't do that.
So of those 13 calls that you go to, how many would you say that you end up taking to a hospital for admission?
I'd say 90%.
So if I can add some comment, my, my thought, this is a specific use permit. That means that we have already zoned this property to another use. This area of town has a different use that we've already designated and they're looking to change that for a specific use. And when we're going to look at a specific use, I think it should bring benefit to the city. It should excel beyond its originally designed use. And I think that this type of facility has the potential to become a larger burden on our, our fire department that I've already talked about in the past, needs more staff and already, this, this facility is not able to adequately care for their patients and they start having emergencies where they call 911 and we have to go and take care of that because they can't get a transfer truck. That's a realistic possibility. I do not see a reason to approve this specific use. I don't think that the potential risk versus benefit is there. They will have licensed LVNs and, and nurses there. And some of those facilities are very well-run. Some of them are not. We don't know what this one's going to be. And I'm not saying it's going to be bad. I'm saying the potential's there and it doesn't meet enough of a benefit for me to change our zoning ordinances in order to approve it.
Can either, between Chief Bits or, or our city attorney, could, could we get an explanation as to what requirements are placed upon a facility that obtains a type B license?
I'd have to go to my computer and look it up, but it's, it's regulated and requires nurses, licensed nurses. That's, type 1 doesn't. So that's why we, or type A doesn't. Type B does. And that's why I specifically said it's type B. Now to answer, just to bring one more thing in, the management company that they're looking at to bring in to manage the nurses, they mentioned that in their, in their request as to who they would bring. I looked that company up and they have a great track record. So I want to make sure that, that y'all know, you know, they're looking at a company that doesn't have any negative aspects of their, of their business. So I did look them up just to see if they're Better Business Bureau, any complaints. They don't have any. And they've been operating since 2008.
Thank you, Jer.
I mean, my only concern would be we don't know that they would necessarily stick around. I mean, even if they do, I mean, once we, once we grant the specific use permit, I assume that it's more or less in perpetuity as long as they're meeting the conditions of the, the permit, correct?
That's right. I mean, you can put conditions in it which are there in the report to have, you know, updates or, you know, prove-ups to certain things, which now, after the, the second meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, originally there was just land use-related items, you know, landscaping buffers, that type of thing. But when the chief mentioned these other type of emergency services issues that might be brought up, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and added two conditions that were related to the type B permitting and that the applicant, the property owner, will have to prove up to the council annually that they have, they have met and satisfied, you know, all state requirements related to that permanent, permit. And if that permit has not been authorized by the state, then the specific use permit terminates. And so at that point, then what, I mean, if, assuming there's a structure there, the use that's permitted by that structure wouldn't be allowed. That's the way that the, the specific use permit is structured right now.
Can I ask, what's the size? How many, what?
89 beds.
89? And what does the manor have?
200 apartments.
So it's less than half that size. I imagine you can get a number from Cy Fair's Fire Department on this, but you have any idea about how many calls is probably going to be generated a month of a facility that size?
I don't.
And I'm pretty sure they've probably got a facility in their area of a similar size.
But I think that really depends on the agency running it. Because I know of assisted living facilities or memory care facilities that I, I couldn't recall a time that they called 911. They use their transfer service. They very well equipped nurses, say that? And then I know some that they, they have 911 calls all the...
Again, that goes back to my question of their being able to use a contract ambulance service. I guess I have a question for the city attorney. Impact fees, I'm not sure what the definition of an impact fee is, but the one I have in my head is that it might pertain to this.
Well, impact fees are generally for development. And so they're not, it's, it wouldn't be applicable here. The, the type of thing that I think that you'd be wanting to see is what, you know, if there was an average call response or cost to call for the emergency services and if this, you know, went over that, could we attach some fee to that, you know, to that type of overage? I, I don't want to make that call right now because I haven't looked at that, impacted that on a specific use permit. I know that for sure if the council want to consider something like, like an adjusted fee schedule, you could definitely do that and adopt that through ordinance and, you know, in your general fee, in your fee schedule. The way that, again, the way the specific use permit right now is drafted is intended to address the, the emergency service response by, by, by attaching the restrictions and the specific use permit to the state requirements for that, you know, for the type B license that's proposed for, for the use.
Yeah. Another...
Recording in progress.
Another idea I was thinking of, we have an ordinance in this city pertaining to hotels that if they generate over a set number of calls of, for service from our police department and fire per month, that we require them to contract with their own security services. And we just applied that on one of the hotels here in the city. I'm just wondering if we could do something like that in the ordinance, that if they went over a certain number of calls, then we could then require them to have their own contract ambulance services.
I mean, I, I don't think that that's prohibited by the way your specific use permit chapters written.
You're still muted.
So, so it could be added in?
You could add that as a condition. It's just that, the idea though would be that you're, we already have built into it now. And I'm not speaking against what you're suggesting. Right now you have an... and I, I'm not speaking against what you're suggesting. Right now, you have an annual report from the, from the applicant and property owner to prove up the Type B license. You could add it, you may, I guess you have to work with the chief and figure out what, what call number you'd want, and then, you know, determine if it's above or below that type of call, and then prove up what type of call it actually was and all that. But, I mean, yeah, there's, the, the general idea for a specific use permit is to make sure that the use that's, the use is allowed by right in whatever zone, in zone, that, that when the zoning ordinance was created, there were some additional uses that, that could be applied in the middle of those uses allowed by right, except under some certain conditions that would allow those additional uses to blend in well with the surrounding properties. And so that's the general purpose of the specific use permit, is to make sure that this use, that it blends in well with the other uses that are allowed by right in that same zone. And so, and as I think that, so that's why it's your discretion to add whatever regulations, conditions that you want to put in it, put in that specific use permit to make that transition happen. And so that's why, the, the way it's structured now, you have landscaping and buffering requirements to handle the, the, the physical, you know, construction and physical impact that that, the construction might have on neighboring property owners. And then when we bring in emergency services type discussion, then you can add certain restrictions there, too.
Yeah, I guess, uh, uh, my main concern is the burden on the fire department and the, then they carry over to the economic impact on our citizens.
Yeah. I have a question for the chief and, and, um, in-
Bob, can you unmute the laptop, please?
Sorry, James?
Thank you.
In the, uh, last, um, P and Z meeting, uh, you spoke of, uh, you mentioned the figure of thirteen per month, um, thirteen calls per month, uh, and you also specified that, uh, the owners and you were going to have or had had a conversation about, um, that excessive amount, um, or remember, if I recall correctly, uh, have you had that conversation and have you seen any, if so, have you seen any fruitfulness of that? And let me, before you answer, let me say where I'm going with this. I, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, an owner, just as of a house or in any other business, right, has, has a stake in the game, and they have a responsibility to operate their home or their business in accordance with, with the laws, and to make sure that it's, it's not abusing, you know, facilities or, or services that are, that are provided to it, and, uh, that they're actually a good member of the community, right? In, in that, that respect. Um, and just wanted to make sure that, see where that was going with, uh, with regard to, uh, the conversations you might have had with the owner of the manor.
So we have not had any conversations, and it hasn't been contacted by him, nor have I made contact with him. That evening, I took it, his comments to believe that his staff was calling the city on complaints regarding other items, other than EMS and fire-related stuff. Um, I didn't take his comments as EMS-related. I took it as issues with codes and code enforcement and that kind of thing. Do you remember that?
Yeah, we, it, I don't know that he quite understood that the phone calls were for EMS things and other related items.
I think he was thinking that we were talking about the burden was on calling the city on all of these different things that they had problems with, but I don't, uh, yeah, I don't think he really understood that it was EMS I was talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding was that property was purchased at the same time as the land that Castle Bridge is, is now on. What kind of risk do we have from, from legal action if they can't use that land as they had intended it?
So there's no, there's no liability for you to deny a specific use permit? It's, it's conditioned, I mean, that's the, the point of it, is before they get a certificate of occupancy for these, whatever's listed in your code, which is, this falls into one of the uses that's listed, they have to obtain a specific use permit, so that risk is, is on the property owner. There is no, there is nothing prohibiting the property owner from using that, that property right now for whatever the, the, the reason, the uses by right that are listed in the code. I don't have those in front of me, but all those uses right now by right can be placed on the property. There's no liability for the council to reject or deny a specific use permit.
And I like what James was saying about being a, a well-rounded community and, and having buildings and, I don't know what, what I'm trying to say, but, uh, places for all types of, all, all ages, all walks of life. So in your opinion, you, you service most of JV or all of JV and, and even a little bit further from it. Are there other places around that are similar where people who have memory care needs are able to attend? Or is this a, a need that we're really lacking in Jersey Village?
In our response area, we don't have anything like that. I mean, we have a couple of group homes, five people max in each home, but, um, we don't have anything like this type of facility. And this facility is looking at the, the, the first floor assisted living and the second floor memory care. So you would split, you know, forty residents assisted living, forty residents, you know, memory care.
Yeah, my, my main concern right now is that we don't have a clear understanding of what the Class B licensure gets us in terms of some additional reassurance that we don't currently have with the, the senior living facility that we have. Um, I kind of just quickly tried to search through some of the state regulatory language concerning Class B licenses, and it looks like it primarily has to do with the mobility of the residents and the staffing needed if there's some need for evacuation of the facility, ensuring that twenty-four seven staffing is available just to move them out of the facility if need be, which is a completely different concern from, uh, what chief has raised regarding the, the, the pressure that it would place on our EMS staff to respond to calls for service. The other thing that I'm concerned about also is that if we're gonna compare it to the existing senior care facility, where if we're trying to narrow down those calls only to emergency calls, if the patient's being transported to the hospital ninety percent of the time from the existing facility, if we use that as a sort of a measuring stick, I don't know that we really reduce our burden on staff, even if there is, say, for example, a nurse uh, that could handle non-emergency situations, unless some of those transports to the hospital are non-emergency in nature.
Yeah, there's a lot of them that are non-emergency in nature, but, you know, we're not gonna deny somebody who says, "I want to go to the hospital," right?
But just-
I think it's important to recognize that the existing facility is not an exist- a facility, it's an apartment. It is no different than eighty-six fifty-five Jones Road, eleven one eleven Pleasant Colony. The only thing is because of the way it was developed, they have to be fifty-five or older, or a tenant. The, the, the person on the lease has to be fifty-five and older. There are no staff to provide care. So let's, then, that facility is by the same owner, and every time I go there, we hear complaints about it, but that's not a good measurement for what this facility could do.
Because the, the residents that receive care three times a week, that's private care, correct? That's not a part of that facility.
Right. They're paying a company to come out and take care. My family members are paying somebody to go and take care of a family member. Yeah.
Any further discussion on this item? Or do we have a motion?
I mean, as long as this special use permit provides the requirement of the Type B license, I mean, I don't necessarily see it being any more of a burden than any other facility. It just so happens that the people that live in the manor are unfortunately unhealthy.
I, I guess I would probably just feel a little bit more comfortable if we knew exactly what that Class B license does, uh, in terms of staffing or potentially reducing, but, I mean, because at the end of the day, i- if we grant the special use permit, and if it suddenly spikes our calls for service, well, we're gonna be right back here looking to hire some additional EMTs very quickly.
It provides a skill level that we don't see in other facilities.
Yeah, that, that really is the bottom line of the Type B. It provides certifications and skill levels, minimum staffing.
And regulations with the Department of State Health Services who comes every year and makes sure that their, their staff is meeting CE hours and up to date on their certifications and they're licensed.
Do we, do we have any statistics on Class B facilities and, and calls for, average calls for service? Does anyone know if we have, uh, any of that information?
I don't.
I, I was, I was asking whether we had an idea as to what the state average for calls for ambulance service were to, to facilities with a Class B license? So that we could get at least a, a baseline for what we might, could expect the impact to be.
Certainly can do the research on, on that to try and figure out what the average is.
Is this something we could, I mean, certainly better than denying the permit, I'm sure, from the owner's perspective? Is this something we could potentially postpone to, uh, the March regular meeting in order to get some more information? I, I don't want us to rush into this either way.
But isn't this just adding the special use permit to that zone? It's not granting someone a special use permit?
No, I think, my understanding is this is granting this facility a special use permit to operate in this manner. In other words, once, once we grant it, they're off and running. This is our one opportunity to make sure we have an impact on the facility and, and make sure that it's not imposing an unusual or, uh, unreasonable burden on our emergency services.
And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, city attorney, but if we go through, uh, the special u- use permit is on a request-by-request basis. So if there was to be a second facility of this sort, it doesn't mean that it's Zone G is available for all, um, memory care facilities. It just, they'd have to apply with P and Z and go through us again, or council again.
Yeah, that's right. So right now, I mean, and, you, if you look at your Zone G, you'll have a list of all uses by right. Any, any property owner in Zone G can do those uses by right. And then you have a section that says specific uses that have to have ca- Plan Z, P and Z approval and council approval with, with conditions added by either body, and those, and there's a list of four or five, I think, in, in Zone G. One of those is, is elderly care facility type. I can't remember the exact wording, but that, that's where this would fall. And though, so the expectation is that you cannot do that by right, only through additional approval by the council, and then subject to whatever conditions that council wants to put on. I had a question for the chief. I mean, I think one, and, and if you wanted to table this, you know, for later, we might want to look at maybe adding language. I think it's getting at the heart of what we're talking about, specific use. I mean, not specific use, but the, tying it to Type B state license approval. But I think we can also add in there about patient transfers. There should be, is there like a transfer agreement that maybe we could ask for? Do you have any of those in your department with, you know?
We're not a transfer service, though, I don't, so I don't have transfer agreements. But, um, we certainly would be open for them having a transfer service on, on their con- in their contracts. Is that, is that where you're getting that, adding that to it?
Because if, if we had a way, maybe instead of going the route of, of just expecting that your department's gonna be handling all the calls, that if you did, like, attach to it a transfer, like, let them show that they have a transfer agreement in place that would handle the non-emergency calls, so that way you would be responding only to the emergency services calls at that location. And then that part of the, that, that seems to me that, that might hit at what we're talking about. And so instead of talking about additional fees and having us to measure all that, we'll make the, the, not make, but request the property owner do that as part of the, you know, the structure of, of the use.
I don't know if you need a motion on this or whatever, but, I mean, I'd like to see it table to the March meeting.
I, I think we would probably just take no action on this and bring it back on the, is that something we do? Does it pose any serious issues, Lori, or are we?
No, we can just go ahead and, um, direct staff on what you would like to see, and then once we're ready to bring that back, we can bring it back for you.
Okay, I want to ensure we have consent. I mean, I don't think it requires any formal action, but I do want to ensure we have consensus from council that everyone would like to wait and give, uh, staff an opportunity to, um, kind of tie up some of these loose ends we've talked about tonight. Is that right?
Yeah, I would definitely like more information.
Okay, so I think we're, we're primarily looking at ensuring that they, that we understand exactly what the nature of that care is that they would have, and that we take some reasonable steps to ensure that we reduce whatever burden might exist due to non-emergency calls. Um, I think that, those are the two main things that we probably would need to see to ensure that, uh, that council would feel comfortable with, uh, approving the special use permit.
And you want to see the average, uh, response from ambulances to similar type facilities?
I think it would be helpful, just so that we, again, because we are talking about, uh, uh, at least based on what I read, Class B facilities typically are ones that, and I'm not saying they necessarily would have the, these sorts of patients, but we are talking about a facility that then would be licensed to accept, like, say Alzheimer's patients, things of that nature. It would be good to understand whether or not that presents a completely different burden on average compared to, say, like, senior living apartments. Um, because it could be that, yeah, it's different for a senior living apartment complex, uh, because you may have a variety of patients in different physical conditions. Uh, maybe it's a situation where we would see a higher number of calls for service to this facility because the pa- because the residents may be in more serious, uh, medical condition. But I think the stats are gonna be helpful to, to better understand the impact.
Just for some, just for some information, um, Michelle had asked about number of these facilities that are available in Jersey Village. There are none inside of Jersey Village, but there are at least fifteen within the zip codes are immediately adjacent.
That is what I was asking. Thanks, James.
Yeah, so in other words, it's not a, not a market where we're, we're going to be putting people nearby in danger of not having services. It's just a question of whether to have one in our city limits.
Yes, and that is, right off the state's website, they have a downloadable database that you can pull all the, uh, facilities, all the assisted living facilities.
So unless staff needs any other clarification, I think we probably have an, an understanding of what we need before our next regular meeting. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, we took a little bit of a secure this rat route, but I think we are currently at, uh, mayor and council comments. I am going to start down at this end with council member Mitchum.
Um, Happy Presidents' Day, and also I had the pleasure of joining the JV Women's Group and had our first couple meetings. I encourage all of you ladies out there in Jersey Village to come along. We have some cool things coming up, and it was really nice just to meet a bunch of people that I have never met before and, um, some more friendly faces.
Great. Council member Shepherd.
I'd just like to thank Joe Hewitt for coming in and giving us an update on the, on the JVSO, and um, I encourage, um, those that want to volunteer, to, to volunteer. I have two parents that, um, participate, and I know that, um, my mother enjoys it immensely, and, um, it's been really great for them, you know, having the connection and, and being around their friends. And, um, so, yeah, I would encourage anyone that's interested to get in, involved, whether it's becoming a member or becoming a volunteer, um, to reach out.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that and, uh, thank Ms. Hewitt for, uh, coming and joining us today. It's an incredible, incredible group, and, uh, one of the benefits of joining council was getting to know that group a lot better, and, uh, I appreciate everything you do, and I'm, kudos on growing in the, the, uh, the amount you have. Um, the, the other thing is that, I guess, before we meet again, we have spring break and, uh, St. Patty's Day, so, uh, luck of the Irish to all of you, and, uh, that's-
Council member Wobenhorst. Oh, sorry, I guess, let me, let me go to James. I'll tr- his chair's there. We'll go in order like that.
I, I don't have, I, I echo a lot of the same things other people said. Thank you.
All right, council member Wobenhorst.
Yeah, I'll be brief, but I just want to express my thanks and appreciation of the JVSO. You have become a real asset to this community, uh, and you, Joe, you're, you and your staff have done one heck of a job.
All right, well, yeah, I would echo what everyone else has said, of course, that- you can never say it enough, that the, the Jersey Village Senior Outreach is a huge asset to this community and enriches uh, I think the community, not just for seniors, but I think for everyone, because it's uh, it, it allows our community to continue to have the diversity of age that it does and to continue to, to have that generational richness that, that makes our community so great. In addition, I wanted to, it's still a little ways away, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that our Founder's Day event is coming up on April ninth. So if you have not already, uh, I would encourage you to go to the city website, find out more about that event. It looks like uh, our Parks and Recreation Committee and staff have a huge event planned. I mean, they're, it's, it's going to be a spectacle, I think is probably the best word to use. So I, I know we've already got our, our, our wristbands or whatever for the event. But I would encourage you to check out the uh, events and look at some of the offerings uh, there as far as uh, some of the specials that you can uh, can get for uh, rides and events and some of the VIP perks that are available. And uh, come on out, it's, it's going to be a blast, so. Thanks everyone for coming, uh, and also wanted to just say thanks to everyone who came out to my town hall that I held uh, this past Thursday. I'll hold another one in May, uh, so that date will be uh, coming out here in the next month or two. Uh, but otherwise, uh, have a great evening and meeting adjourned.